Good allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Any citizen concerns not on the agenda? Okay, need approval of the agenda for today?
Move approval of the agenda dated October...
What?
Kenny Schmitz, Building Services. We received bids for LED materials last week, and I'd like to update you with some information on that. Originally, we had five contractors do come to a pre-bid meeting that we had. Those were Crescent Electric, Westman Electric, 3E, Echo, and Fastenal. And of those, we had two submittals for bids at the time of opening. One came from Crescent Electric and the other one came from Echo. Crescent Electric's bid was disqualified. Sorry? Crescent Electric's bid was disqualified and returned unopened. The reason being, when they submitted the bid, they told us that the bid bond that we required was not included. And also, part of the bid package itself wasn't totally complete. And the result was, we ended up with basically one bid for LED lighting materials. The one bid was from Echo. However, we believe we got some very good pricing from them after looking at their bid numbers. And Shane with Baker Group has some information there. Our original estimates on those costs were $556,330.
Kenny, I don't know if this, we should be doing this?
Well, we can't do anything with it.
I'm not asking for, just informational only.
You're not considering rebidding?
I'm not, in my view, considering rebidding. That, you'll be able to discuss that when it's on the agenda for next week.
Correct.
And so, our current bidding did come in underneath our estimated number. And so, in reviewing that, we thought we got some good pricing. In the estimated number, or I mean, in the bid number, we actually included a 5% overage for bulbs and a 1% overage on retrofit kits to allow us to have some, a very small supply in the future in case we needed additional items. In the original estimates that we gave you, those were not included in that number.
Okay, so will we over this again next week?
We will.
All right, very good. Thank you.
And assume, according, you guys actually get the bids that you have them, is that correct? Okay, then we can keep them, I just thought you guys needed, that was fine, I just wanted to make sure you gave it to you guys.
Yeah, the reason the bids are being reported tonight is that we use the procedure of opening the bids, it was still a public meeting, but it was outside of a board of supervisors' meeting. So, the code says that they're to be reported at the next meeting of the supervisors. So, that's why they're being presented. There's no action that's being asked for at this point, but that's why they're being presented.
Do we need to, do we need to receive those then, or?
I just believe that it should be noted in the minutes.
And they would be included in next week's homework.
I would expect that if there's going to be an action item.
I would expect that next week we'll be bringing an action item. And I just wanted to remind the board that we are on a time-constraint basis.
My name is Rhonda Roberts, I'm with KNL Construction in Sergeant Bluff. And I'm here about 2071 Glen Allen Road. We have applied for a grading permit in the past to grade the Gernhardt's property and lower their driveway by about 10 feet. They have a large hill in their driveway that they would like removed. And sometime in the future, whatever their plans are, they'd like to put residential housing there. They have 9.24 acres, so it would fall within the 2 acres per lot. Planning and zoning has denied it because they say that the property is a borrow pit. Because KNL had proposed, instead of doing what you do sometimes and take the excess dirt and just spreading it somewhere, they would take it and stockpile it and use it for a different job. According to the grading ordinance definitions, "A borrow pit shall mean any place or premises where excavation of dirt, soil, sand, gravel, or other material occurs on the borrow site for use at another location irrespective of whether for consideration or not for consideration for the purpose of this title. Material removed incidental to onsite grading or building construction shall not qualify as a borrow pit." All we are asking to do is grade their property. The removing dirt is incidental, it has to be done to lower the driveway, there's no place to put the dirt. I know they're concerned about the quantity, but, and I can leave this with you, I have from Iowa DOT several projects, I only printed off 10 sheets of 41 projects where you have to remove dirt from the property in order to do the grading. Some of them are little, as low as like 2,000 cubic yards. One of the projects had to remove 442,641 cubic yards. This project would be moving just over 100,000 cubic yards. All we are asking is that you guys look into this because, again, according to your own grading ordinance definition, construction shall not qualify as a borrow pit.
When did planning and zoning deny?
Back in the spring. And then, we resubmitted a grading application that was more thorough on October 9th. October 15th, I talked to John Pellelo, he said that he would not accept it and that we had to do a conditional use for a borrow pit. We did not do a conditional use for a borrow pit because the Gernhardt's do not want their front yard a borrow pit. They only want it graded. We did submit a conditional use for the grading. Pellelo told Mrs. Gernhardt that he would not accept it unless KNL signed the application also, even though there's no place on it for a contractor to sign. KNL was not a joint applicant.
Mark, do you want to speak to this, do you have any information?
We did get an email from John.
Yes.
Mark Narwood, Berry County Engineer. This is the same site that the Board of Adjustment denied a borrow on this spring. That meeting was rather contentious, granted, it was not as refined a plan as this time where they're looking at just taking that material to a single site. Now, I don't know what our ordinance says, but I look at grading as moving the dirt around on the site. I look at it as a borrow when you're removing 100,000 cubic yards and taking it to another location. I think that's the way planning and zoning is looking at it in this case as well. John has sent a memo off to his Board of Adjustment as to whether they'll grant this another review. I know perhaps this is one where the county attorney's office should take a look and see which definition this falls within, whether it is site grading or whether it is a borrow area.
I was actually at that Board of Adjustment meeting and reported back that following week that I felt that every procedure had been followed. And there were multiple residents who spoke out against the conditional use permit. And I felt that the Board of Adjustment also did its due diligence in their denial of the application. My only other question would be, it's not really our statutory authority as a Board of Supervisors, just falls under the Board of Adjustment ultimately, does it not?
If it was simply a grading application for a grading permit, then that would fall under planning and zoning and not necessarily need to go to the Board of Adjustment, so there's a possibility there. I do know that it's on the agenda for the Board of Adjustment, I believe, November 2nd.
Yes, they're going to address this in November.
And they're, they're going to address...
Whether they would have another hearing.
Right, whether they can consider the application again because the zoning ordinance is, would only allow for one application a year unless there's some sort of changed circumstances, change in the law that would allow them to reconsider it. So, that's the sole purpose of their meeting that's coming up as to whether they can consider the new application.
My understanding is the Board of Adjustment is the final say.
Correct.
And I guess that was just my point as far as the recourse on behalf of the Board of the Supervisors is, it falls with the Board of Adjustment. And so, while I appreciate, you know, the appeal to this board, I think that ultimately, the Board of Adjustment will weigh in.
And I think the method of review of the Board of Adjustment is the courts, isn't it? Joshua, eventually, they could appeal at a district court level.
I think that is correct.
John's here now.
Mr. Pellelo, would you like to speak?
Well, I've gotten maybe a little bit about the borrow pit scenario. I'm not sure where you are in your...
Ms. Roberts is here, KNL.
What would you like me to address?
Well, I don't know that there is anything, you have it going before the Board of Adjustment?
We sent out an email earlier today, did you see that email?
For a bio, we don't want a bio, we just want to hold the property.
For months, if not, since May of, March of 2015, there has been a disagreement between our ordinance definition of borrow pit, their interpretation, and your zoning directors. In my mind, the definition of borrow pit is particularly on point tied to how this operation will take place. In the most recent application, we are talking about 107,000 cubic yards of material leaving a parcel and traversing a haul route past probably, last count, we're up to about 60 or 70 homes. Many of those are on hard surface, but not all. To be used for a I-29 reconstruction project near Salix. I can't recite the definition of borrow pit, but when you have that substantial amount of cubic yards of earthen material leaving a site, no matter what the stated purpose is for, my definition of, that is a definition of a borrow pit. And I believe our county engineer agrees. Obviously, if they wish to appeal a decision of the Director of Planning and Zoning, there's a separate procedure for that.
Not if it goes to the Board of Adjustment.
Well, there's an, there's an, if it goes to the Board of Adjustment and they raise the issue and want a determination by a separate agenda item on the Board of Adjustment agenda, they can do that. There are certain legal rules we have to follow in regard to that appeal process. We could add that to the determination, but I have not received any formal appeal request from KNL.
All right, the next step, though, is the Board of Adjustment.
On November 2nd, the Board of Adjustment will hear the issue of a successive conditional use permit application, and that's all they're going to hear. The ordinances state that when a similar conditional use permit application is received within a 12-month period, the Board of Adjustment is required to determine if one of the exceptions applies to enact or initiate another conditional use permit process. That'll happen on the 2nd. Then, on the 4th Monday of November, which I think is about the 23rd, if the Board decides to accept, Board of Adjustment decides to accept, the zoning commission will make a recommendation on whether certain standards are met. They'll make that recommendation to the zoning, to the Board of Adjustment, who will actually hold the public hearing and make a determination on the new application on December 7th.
Okay, so there is a process.
Yeah, we're on our way. We're in first of about three phases.
Sorry, Rhonda, I don't think it comes to us.
Maybe I haven't done a good job explaining that, but a Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial body and is designed by state statute to work outside of the authority of the Board of Supervisors. Should you decide to appeal their decision, your sole recourse is district court.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The grading ordinance provided to me by John Pellelo, again, under borrow pit, the definition says, "Shall mean any place or premises where excavation of dirt, soil, sand, or gravel, or other material occurs on the borrow site for use at another location irrespective of whether for consideration or not for consideration. For the purpose of this title, material removed incidental to onsite grading or building construction shall not qualify as a borrow pit." It does not give an amount that if it's over this many cubic yards or under this cubic yards. It says, "If it is onsite grading or building construction shall not qualify as a borrow pit." This is the grading ordinance. If the grading ordinance is being interpreted in a different way and quantities are putting on there that are not in the grading ordinance, what recourse do we have if it's not to come to you?
The Board of Adjustment in District Court. Even if we agreed with your presupposition of your premise, we would not be able to enact or to make any sort of decision that would be in your favor or against your favor of the application. It's not within our authority.
That's not what I'm asking, I'm just asking, if this is your grading ordinance and it says that if it's used for construction, it's not a borrow pit, why can't they follow that? That's all I'm asking, is why can't you follow your own grading ordinance?
Well, I think I heard it earlier. You have a disagreement over a borrow pit and grading, and that's not something we can deal with. I believe that gets into the zoning and Board of Adjustment. And if that doesn't work, then you gotta keep going.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, need approval of the agenda for today?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the agenda with item number 10 preceding item 9B.
I don't have any trouble with that.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Approval of minutes for October 20th?
Move approval of the minutes dated October 20th, 2015.
Need a second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Discussion and approval of claims.
Move approval of the claims.
Need a second.
Second.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you have one claim in there to be paid to True Speak. The board did allocate $15,000 for True Speak. The problem, we did not allocate money for expenses. There is $2,037 worth of expenses that exceed the 15,000 allocation from gaming revenues. So, I'm here before the board to just let you know, it will exceed what you approved. That will eat back into our $21,982 that's left, so that knocks us down to $19,982 left. But just so the board's aware, I don't know if they need a motion to increase that to $17,37, or you just go ahead and exceed the obligation and go ahead and pay it. That'd be...
What does that leave in gaming, Denny?
What?
What does that leave in gaming?
That will leave you $19,947.
And we'll assume there'll be additional expenses from strategic planning as well.
Oh, for Janet Carl, we just had, the last week, three days, there'll be some expenses. It won't be the extreme this one was because this, she's from Ankeny, so the motels, you know, mile and stuff like that, meals. But that'll exceed too, but we'll wait for that bill to come through and come back on that.
Right.
I don't know if we approved expenses for that.
Yeah, I put something in there. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you, sir. Human Resources.
Was that, was that additional amount in there? I didn't think so. I thought, I thought I saw 14,000 something.
Well, but she added 3,000 more on, it's 14,37, but she had 3,000 for another extension of the contract.
Where was the 3,000 at?
3,000 for additional trainer, because it was approved, I believe, last week.
Was that under what, the board?
Yes, so it'd be 12,000, it was original contract, 3,000 for additional trainer, and then the expenses would be above and beyond that.
So, it was 14 plus expenses that 3,000 has nothing to do with?
No, it's, what we're paying on there now, it's the 12,000 plus the 14, the above amount is what we did not have obligated out of gaming revenues. The 3,000 will come later when we do the additional trainer.
So, the approval of the claims is approving that additional amount?
Yes, yes, well...
Do you need a motion on where to take it out of?
The board approved a contract with her and the contract allowed for reasonable expenses.
That's right.
I remember that we added reasonable in there because initially, there wasn't any cap on this sort of expenses.
So, it's just making the board aware that it did exceed the 12,000.
Okay.
But still, is it then, within the realm of the contract?
Right, it's already been approved when the contract was approved, although you may not have talked about the specific dollar amount.
Yeah, well, it's an unknown amount anyway until you get the bill because you don't know what they're going to eat or travel or all that.
Right.
Okay, need a motion, approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Floating Christmas holiday.
The floating holiday this year is proposed to be the 24th.
Of December?
December.
Okay. Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you. Now, approval of settlement agreement with Jennifer Fuentes, need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Secondary roads.
First item on the agenda is approval of a permit to work in the right-of-way for Doug Washburn. This is to adjust an existing driveway.
Need a motion?
Move approval of the permit to work in the highway right-of-way for Doug Washburn?
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Consideration of, oh, go ahead, you go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's, that's all right. I'm digging for the right piece of paper here, so. Second one we have is consideration of a permit to install an underground utility, electric lines within the highway of Mid-American Energy on Delaware Avenue to provide better service to a new building on the Doyle Smith Farm. They're looking at putting an underground wire instead of an overhead wire across Delaware Avenue, which is the Bronson Blacktop. I recommend approval of their request.
Need a motion?
Move approval.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Just trying to get the correct one out here. The next one we have is approval of an underground permit for Mid-American Energy on Wayside Avenue in Rock Township. This is in the Cushing area. This is for a new electrical line, part of the service work being done in the relocation of utilities for the new four-lane Highway 20 project.
Need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Next item we have is to consider receipt of bids for the pickup truck for the weed commissioner. Pass these along to the board chair for signature while I'm digging for the rest. Also, bid tab forms. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
First one we have is from Jensen Motors of Lamar's. Purchase price, $23,968. Trade-in for the current pickup, $650. Net purchase price, $23,318.
Not much of a trade-in, huh?
It's a very old truck.
Does it have what they're bidding on there?
They're bidding on a 2016 Ford F-150. This is a straight cab, eight-foot box, four-wheel drive. Next bid we have is from Berry Motor Company of Danbury. Purchase price, $26,747. Trade-in on unit 603 is $1,100. Net purchase price, $25,647. They are also proposing a 2016 F-150. Final bid is from Kneffler Chevrolet.
Another Ford?
I don't think so this time. Their bid, purchase price, $24,990. Less trade on 603, $550. Net purchase price, $24,440.
You need to look at them?
Yeah, I need to confer with Dennis as well.
Okay.
I think we had some miscoded expenditures this year where we used some of our new vehicle dollars toward repairs on the vehicle. They're one code number different on the claims, so we need to take a look at that to, in light of our budget.
Move that the bids be directed to the county engineer to evaluate the both those bids and return onto the board with a recommendation.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Thank you very much.
Social Services, Theresa Oakham.
Hello. Authorization for chairman to sign letter of discontinuation of Woodbury County Targeted Case Management Program and Chapter 24 accreditation. It has come to that point.
Within 30 days.
We plan...
Or after 30 days.
Yes, we plan on staying, remaining open until January 1st. But if we don't have any staff left, we would have to close 30 days from when they receive this letter. this letter.
And you're getting closer.
Yes, all have committed to an MCO, but three out of eleven.
How many do you need? One, two?
Well, three hundred and fifty people we need. We can do it with three. We can finish up with three, but those remaining three commit from now until then, we can't, we cannot. And we are working with DHS Case Management to transfer people over there, to them.
The service will not just disappear.
No, not at all. We have arranged it where they are going to continue to get the service either through the MCO or DHS Case Management.
And thirty they notice is the amount required by law?
Yes, it is. Because we are accredited through Chapter 24 standards, so we have to let them know our program will be ending.
Move that chairman be authorized to sign.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
All right, number ten.
Or nine A.
Nine A.
Nine A.
Say what?
There's nine A, Suland District Health.
Okay. Nine A.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This is Suland District Health, CIP item, and I am hoping that this strikes a balance. We went over this last meeting, so I won't go on too long about it, but this will strike a balance in being able to allow Suland District Board of Health to be given an endorsement, so they would be able to move forward with their building CIP project. I know that we have Kevin Reamy with us today, so I would move that the Suland District Board of Health be given an endorsement to retain the funding amount over twenty-five percent reserve funding in order to move forward with their building CIP project.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Danny and I disagree on this. I think it's not a very good budgeting practice. The other thing is this is going to lower our cash carryover balance for next year. So I don't know exactly what that's going to do to tax asking.
Anyone else?
You mean as far as district health releasing the?
It's going to come out of the cash carryover reserve.
The cash carryover is going to come from district health, the twenty-five percent is in the district health fund. If we would've got the money back, yes, it could have been pops used to help offset expenses next year, but you got to weigh that against borrowing three hundred thousand interest payable back over five years. So it's three hundred thousand, the two sixty-six is not in our cash reserves, it's in district health. And this is a one-time situation. The board does own the building, the board does control the building, but everything needs to come back to this board for repairs, which Kevin has done, and our board has too. So the two sixty-six will stay with district health, the three hundred thousand, we don't have to borrow.
Right. And you're pretty sure that that two sixty-six is two sixty-six, this is post-financial audit?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Have a sense we need a roll call, Mr. Auditor.
Lawson?
No.
Smith?
Aye.
Taylor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You want to do C or can we go to ten?
I can go ahead and do C if, I don't hear any objections. This is included in your minutes, there are some notes from an informational meeting, the committee discussing rural economic development. I won't read them or necessarily summarize, but wanted to make sure that the conduit of information flowed back to the board and tried to take good minutes. One of the consensus items was that rather than coming up with some prescriptive programming of local option sales tax dollars, that we would involve rural mayors and increase the dialogue that way to, I spent about an hour with David Gleiser today, coming up with a survey for those rural mayors to include looking at their top three needs and giving them a list of fifteen different areas and having them describe it as well as their strengths, weaknesses, and their perceived opportunities for the future. And so this would be an opportunity to do just that. And again, just wanted to make sure that I included these minutes so that the rest of the board had a sense of what the meeting was like as we move forward.
Do you see this moving away from like a, are the committees studying not necessarily using local option sales tax as a, like a business, as a tool to attract business like it has been in the past, and being moved over into more like community development? I mean, I was trying to read the notes, I don't know, that's what I was wondering, I guess, when I read it. Is there a shift of it will be given to the towns instead of a tool for business?
I think, I think that's a good point. One of the things that we looked at initially was the sort of things that are easier to equitably distribute to communities, such as the long-term comprehensive plans, community development, those kind of initiatives that can be sort of, as far as the private sector, business capital and that, I don't think that that's necessarily off the table. I think it's something that we didn't broach. The topic came up specifically from our Economic Development Director as far as what would mini grants look like, you know, for small businesses. I don't think that's on or off the table necessarily, I just think that it's something that has to be crafted with a lot of parameters and has to be looked at much more closely than we had time to do in ninety minutes.
You just had one meeting, so on your questionnaire, are you going to then access information about use of it for private sector if that is still on the table?
Absolutely. I think that's one of the questions was, you know, is it, what's really the need for your community? Is it infrastructure, water, sewer, nuisance abatement, revitalization of Main Street? And one of them is private access to capital for businesses, startups. So they'll identify, and I think if one of the fifteen's not listed, they'll say, well, you didn't even list, because you don't know. And so it's information gathering to find out what we don't know.
I guess my only other point is, and I don't know this, so I guess I would ask maybe for an opinion from whoever can answer it. Can local option sales tax be used for community development, or does it have to be targeted for business? I mean, is there someone who answers that question and where you go for guidance?
Well, and David and I talked about that today a little bit, so one of the things that we talked about is if something, let's just take nuisance abatement. If something is simply to tear down an eyesore, then that may be restricted in the sense that it's community development, but it's not really true economic development. If, however, that structure was deemed to be a nuisance because there are plans to repurpose that space and go through a building project, that's what we were asking in that survey, to have mayors and their stakeholders think in terms of not simply community development, but how would it act as a bridge to economic development? So we're not just getting, well, this would be a nice playground to have, and, you know, but we're getting, this would be nice because it'll act as an anchor, that sort of thing.
But then you also, I mean, if they're, just to flush out any information, you'll seek guidance from the state level to, who does that? Auditors, state auditors? I mean, who would oversee the use of that twenty percent? Or where would you go? I'm asking you, Dennis, do you know?
I would say the board is over and our county turn.
Okay, so it stays local.
See what falls in legal parameters.
Okay. That's all.
It's pretty broad. If you say infrastructure, economic development, it's pretty broad because we've used it everywhere.
Okay.
And the restriction of the local option sales tax to economic development, that was something that was set out in the referendum. It's not state law that requires that.
Oh, okay.
But that was in the referendum. In these discussions, is it still being understood that we're funding land and zoning out of there and rural economic development?
I don't, we didn't specifically broach that topic, but I don't think anything that we talked about subverted the intention of the board to do that or said that the board won't do that in the future.
And the question that Joshua started to answer over there, I think that twenty percent originally was for economic development. And there's more to it than that. But it was for rural use primarily, and at the discretion of the board, you know, for economic development in cities. But it was never the intent of the legislation to do roads, infrastructure, anything of that nature. I would ask Joshua if I, should I be corrected on that, or?
If the supervisors were to ask our office for opinion, I mean, we could look into that as far as the parameters of the usage. I know this issue came up within the last three or four years, and I did some, I did a small amount of research at that time, but I wouldn't say that personally I've thoroughly researched the issue. But at least current law, my memory of it from the time is that current law would not restrict the usage, but the referendum, whatever language is in the referendum and the parameters there, would continue to control unless there was a change, you know, a new referendum that was put out there.
Can we direct Joshua to give us an opinion on what that money can be used for? I mean, it's been twenty years since it passed. I just don't want you on a wild goose chase, you know, with these meetings, it just, if the money cannot be used.
Sure.
For, the parameter should be known.
You got that covered? Can you check?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I mean, generally speaking, economic development activities, you know, when courts have, have looked at that, generally they've construed it broadly, you know, to be able to achieve the purposes of, you know, economic development or growing the, you know, growing the tax base, growing the community, so, you know, that's, that's kind of out there in the background of all this discussion, that usually those sorts of things are construed broadly.
Mr. Chair, I just ask Taylor Goodwin, does anything stand out to you? Do you have any extra thoughts of what might be a primary thing to look at?
Taylor Goodwin, TRC, I was there last Tuesday, Jim was not there, Jim is planning on being there the rest of the time along with me. I actually sat down with him this morning, not sat down, but then talked to him this morning about it. Nothing in these minutes or what I told him that warning included in the minutes stood out to him. We have a board meeting this Thursday. I will present what we've talked about with them on Thursday, so it will be ready for us if we have anything to present next Tuesday in Moville. No, nothing, nothing stood out to us. I think we like the fact that we want to go to all fourteen mayors before we kind of come out with something. I think that's something that the TRC can very much support, but no, nothing really stood out, so, thanks.
Okay. Is that good? Now, can we go to number ten?
We can. And thank you for letting us discuss this one first. I do have some information that I think makes it important that we really look at our envisioned 2050 plan and actually the TIF policy that was presented. I called, since I hadn't heard, Bob Johnston from Dorsey and Whitney, and just asked his thought on TIF policy, TIF release, tying to a specific number. And while he said it may be a politically smart move to pass a resolution, if you take the politics out of it, the resolution could be a negative factor for the county. It's not illegal, but possibly too restrictive. So if we could maybe have some time to digest the plan that we paid fifty-four thousand dollars plus to have crafted, decide if we want to go forward on any of the CIP projects, target them, it will cost money to do that, go forward with any of the CIP projects, some of them probably are, you know, not going to happen, maybe they're out of order, I don't, I mean, things have changed since then. So prior to, you know, passing a resolution for in the future, because we've got plenty of time before even that resolution would take place, we should have much more discussion on what the county wants to do in the next four or five years. So my request would be to have this be an agenda item. And have a board retreat. I mean, we've spent a lot of time doing strategic planning, going to the future, but really a very important piece, you know, we just aren't getting to, and we're not all getting to it. And I think that's a problem for the county taxpayers, that we aren't collectively sitting down and hashing out things in a public manner. This TIF policy, the resolution, you know, they're not binding, neither one of them. I just don't want to get us in a situation, and I don't know if I should speak to it now or during the, during your item, because it's kind of a crossover, so maybe I'll just venture into it and you can stop me if it's out of order, I guess.
What did Bob Johnston say?
He said, and did you talk to someone, Mark?
I did.
And you, he said you should have gotten the same information, so you can be my backup here. He said that these would be the negative factors. You could possibly look at extending the life of debt if you commit and, I hope no one asked me too many probing questions because I'm not an attorney, and before I go any further, I'm going to say he recommended every supervisor call, or he do a conference call so we could all hear it. We could possibly get into extending a debt obligation. If we said we were going to release fifty percent of the funds and we have debt obligation, we may have to extend out a debt to meet that obligation, which in turn would cost the taxpayers a lot more money because you'd be paying interest for a longer period of time. He said you could, you would be limiting your use of debt, so there would be possibly no new growth or no new CIP projects. He said you're bargaining away your availability to finance debt obligations, so maybe your interest rate goes up. Says you're sending a message to lending institutions. They will, you give them a reason to pause and think before lending you money. It says, we will not capitalize on all of our new value. Says to the lender, you know, it might raise, raise the question, how much can the county repay debt? If you've obligated, or as he said it, given away fifty percent of your capability to do that. It could be a factor in bond rating down the road. He said you have analysts that work for, I guess Moody's is a bond rate, someone who rates, gives ratings. He said if half of your revenues are questionable, it could be a factor in getting a good bond rating. So that, that's kind of what I heard. I mean, I heard it a couple times, I sent it back to him, he sent it back to me, I sent it back to him, because this is very complex stuff, and that's why you go to a bonding attorney to help you figure all of this stuff out. But what it said to me overall in a very simple statement was that we shouldn't even look at that, a resolution like that, because it could be hurtful to the taxpayers in the long run and to the county.
Can I respond to?
Yes.
At least Mr. Johnston, whom I disagree with on four points? First is, there's a huge condition, and that conditional is if, if you borrowed so much and if you incurred so much. and if you incurred so much debt that you wouldn't be able to pay it back, then limiting yourself to 50% would be harmful. Well, of course. That's true all of the time. The other thing that, because I disagreed from the start that this had to do with a bond issue, the county is not obligated to TIF $1. And that's the thing and we are talking about future revenue that we do not currently have right now. Now, I could see and I would agree with Mr. Johnston's if he said you're going to pass a resolution to do 50% property tax reduction, you have no source of where that's going to come in from, then you may give lenders pause, right? They would be saying, well, how are you going to pay off debt? We are talking about future growth and all we are saying is we're obligating one out of every $2. I think it's problematic for local government. We're talking about $56 million and saying, what if we limited ourselves to something like $28 million? There's no way to lower a bond rating. I mean, what if CF never happened? Would our bond rating be lower? Absolutely not. It'd only lower if we overextend ourselves past our capacity to pay. And so I think that some of those ifs are, you know, I agree with him. If we borrowed so much that we didn't have the capacity to pay, but that's on the board not to do that. And I think one of the impetuses for this is to say, let's let property taxpayers, which is part of this plan, have the first crack at it, so to speak, and have that be taken away so that we know what we have to work with. And so those, I just wanted to respond on the bonding attorney's opinion that there are several ifs throughout that that are true of this board this year.
Well, I guess the point would be you should be having that conversation with him, not me necessarily, because he's the one that can talk to those points much better than I can. And we didn't really get a written opinion from him on this. Maybe you don't consider it important as a board. I'm not sure. I do consider it. I thought these were very good thoughts and he was looking at it as a lender would look at it, as a bank would look at it. And he thought maybe it was our obligation to look at it that way, too, because we don't want to affect anything down the road. And how do we know what kind of debt we're going to have? That was this other point. How do you know? Are you going to say no to all economic development? If that's what you're saying, or if you hadn't abated the taxes, he did say that. He goes, you've abated the taxes. He said, you know, AGP is nine years and it's a lot of years before you even get the CF money in. He said, had you not abated the taxes, sure, you could be looking at a resolution like this. It'd be great. He goes, it would make sense. Why not do it? He says, but you have. He said, since you've done that, he said, he quite honestly just said, you can do what you want. It's not illegal. You certainly said in the resolution that it was non-binding. He said, so they covered it there. He said, it might not mean a lot, but, you know, it's not illegal. And he said, but you also are sending out a message that you're kind of half-open for business.
I think fundamentally it boils down to no matter what we do, we'll be in a better place. So we have to remember this is money we don't already have. We're not necessarily harming anything. We are benefiting as a county, as in infrastructure, we're going to benefit the taxpayers. The bond rating issue, we don't have any control over that with the steps that we're taking right now. Basically, we... I do think we should bring back the envisioned 2050 plan, have more of a discussion on the different projects. You know, we need to cross off the ones that we've done and we need to cross off the ones that are non-starters, but... And give some preliminary direction to economic development. But even if we bring that back, we have to ask ourselves if, you know, what comes first? You know, the chicken or the egg? Do we decide on the number between 30 and 60% in the 2050 plan for taxpayers first? Or do we decide on the number of projects first? And so I think, personally, I think we should decide upon the number for the taxpayers first. So that's where I'm at here and certainly there's different ways to get to the same point, but we have to either limit the projects or vice versa.
I would say also, I just want to, because we're on Supervisor Smith's.
I know. I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay. I mean, there's a blur and that's fine. I just want to concur with Supervisor. I don't have a problem with getting together to discuss the TIF policy. What is the process? What's the policy by which these projects come forward? I think that that's good. I just think that it's something that once we have set out what it is going to be for property taxpayers who were promised. I mean, they were put forward and this 2050 plan was actually rolled out in front of them with 30 to 60%. Now, they didn't know what that percentage was going to be, but they heard time and time again from this board that there was going to be substantial property tax relief. And I think that's what we... We have them as a first priority, these families. And then second, what are the economic... I don't see it as an either-or because to say, well, you can be against 100% of economic development. I'd say, no, we're for 50% of the potential, but not... I think it's very... We have to be very careful of what we're talking about here. When people say 100% of $130 million, what they're talking about is incurring debt and bonding for $130 million. I think that a property taxpayer looks at that and says, are you kidding me? $130 million of economic development projects and where are they? Well, we don't know, but they're out there. I say, wait a second. What about the resolution that one out of every $2 can be used for property tax relief? You floated out these percentages time and again. And we say, well, 50%, we still have a healthy, healthy amount to use for tax increment financing. But I also want to make one other point. We've got to be very careful, too, because the money, the $130 million, is being held up from Western Iowa Tech Community College. It's being held up from the Sergeant Bluff School District. We're taking that money and we're holding it in this floating area and we're saying, we're going to distribute it to all these other places in the county with the hope that there will be substantial tax base growth in the future. Don't lose that point because I don't know if those taxing bodies have clearly been asked that. And if they know, if you took 100%, they wouldn't see a dime of CF revenue until 2035 potentially. So I think that's the other thing we have to be careful of. It's not an either-or, it's simply a balance.
Well, I don't know how to respond to each and every one of those points, but I think somehow in there you've made my point that there should be a balance. I don't see there's a balance with the resolution. I think giving a range is much more prudent. It's much more individualistic going forward. You do realize that if you were going to follow that resolution, there would be absolutely no project. Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong in this. There would be absolutely no new project until 2021. We would have to say no to any kind of development for that many years. Now, is that... And wonder if something comes up, and that's what I'm talking about. So something comes up and we all think it's a good idea. We all, let's invest. But if we're going to hold our feet to the fire, that 50% release, we're restructuring the debt we already have out so we can meet that obligation. That's when you end up having to pay a lot more money because you've had to restructure your loan, you've had to make it longer, you're going to pay a lot more interest. It's...
And I agree with you in that sense.
That's why, what's the big hurry? I guess, what's the big hurry other than a political statement?
I would...
What's the big hurry?
I would reject that it's a political statement.
Yeah, well...
I think, and you can disagree with the motivation.
I do disagree with...
That's fine.
I do.
But I think the big hurry is that government knows no limits and bounds. Once it feels that it has $130 million coming, you can see where this is headed. If we just say, hey, just take 50%, no, that's not enough. $28 million in economic...
But the projects dictate it, not us.
But what do you have, Jackie and Supervisor Smith, in 2016, 2017, 2018? You have nothing right now. And so to say, well, you don't have anything till 2020, in 2019, you only have $99,000. If you wanted to TIF 100% and say, Western Iowa Tech won't get that money, Sergeant Bluff Schools, we can use this for economic development, you would need to look at a $99,000 project. What I'm saying is, you know, let's look at half of that money being for property taxpayers because they believe they deserve it. One other point, the Chamber and Sulan Initiative, talking to Chris McGowan today, and the point of taxes are a very important piece of economic development. People lose that point and say, well, taxes aren't important, businesses don't necessarily look at tax rates. I reject that. And I think this is an economic development tool. And I think if we only look at county TIF dollars, I think we're limiting ourselves.
Would we have been able to do the Sergeant Bluff project if this resolution was in place?
Yes.
We would. We're not meeting the 50% release when they come in, I don't think, for a while. We're in the hole for a while. So if we would... That's what I... I mean, so I guess we have a difference of opinion.
If we don't do anything, we're still not going to have any money until probably 2020, even 2021. If we didn't do anything, because there aren't... There's no income.
Well, we're not going to be doing anything, I don't believe.
No, we can't. Well, we could... We can bond against future monies, but we have to be very careful when we do that.
I believe that it's structured in here that you could do that. I mean, it's all a matter of philosophy on, and I don't... I'm not the bonding attorney, but I do know that I try to surround myself with the people who I think have a lot more knowledge base than I do and then follow their direction. That's how I operate. So I am just telling you, that's the information from the top expert in the state. Those are his thoughts. There is no real hurry on that resolution. It doesn't take effect for a lot of years. And we need more discussion and dialogue on CIP projects, on a comprehensive TIF policy. And I don't see the big hurry. I would like it to be delayed at a retreat. I would like an agenda item.
Can I just ask one question?
To go over this before we ever do the... We may end up, maybe we'll end up with that, but I would just think this step is missing.
When you say CIP projects, are you talking about the sort of things that we're talking about with county infrastructure?
I'm talking about the...
Or are you talking about the... Okay.
They call them CIP.
Okay, that's fine. I just...
I think we have a lot of things in motion. The town hall meetings have been excellent in getting information and connecting with those towns. There's one coming up this month and more need to be scheduled. The Community Development Group that Jeremy reported on, talking about reaching out to all the mayors, having a board meeting with all the mayors coming in and use that survey and discussion to find out what it is they like, what they want, what they're doing, how things are going. I think that's critical before we start tearing into 2050. I think it's about the rural and we need to find out what's the rural about before we start tearing into 2050.
Mark, could I ask you if you heard something different from the attorney you contacted?
Say what?
Did you hear something, a different message from the attorney?
No, surprisingly, it's identical and I swear they must have talked. It's identical.
Or it's the right way to think about it.
Yeah.
One or the other.
I... Jeremy, with all due respect, I see no need for this. It just... It's a feel-good type of thing because you're not binding future boards. You're... It doesn't do anything. If you need the money, if the county needs the money, that is up to the Board of Supervisors at that time. It's not up to us to tell somebody in 2030 what they can or can or should or should not Like I say, it just doesn't make any sense to me. We're not doing anything except saying, we're going to give you, the taxpayer, tax relief, when we're not. We're not doing... We're not giving anything. A future board might, and it's at that time when they do budgets that if they determine it's time to release TIF funds, that's when they give the tax reductions.
I agree with everything that you said, except for the last sentence.
Okay.
It is state law that all... There is no... I think we have a different philosophy in this sense. You don't have to TIF anything, ever. And so thinking in terms of what should we do for a minimum on tax increment financing, you never have to TIF. You have to, by code, you have to release all of that to the taxing bodies, right?
If you do not have it indebted or you intend to indebted.
Right. So we're on the same page there.
Right. So you have to have the income. We put $800,000 into Dogwood Trail. We put a million into the road going into CF. None of this money was on hand. It's all been bonded for. So you're going to have to TIF for that money in order to retire those bonds. Because if you don't, you're going to have to raise taxes to pay for them.
Right. But what this says, and I agree with you, you can't bind, this isn't... We've never stated that this has the force of law or someone who doesn't follow it's going to go to prison or anything like that. But what we've stated is this will be a guide for the board to be able to say, we don't have the availability to borrow that much because otherwise we would be going back on what this board set out as a policy. Now, any policy can be broken. Even a TIF policy that says, well, we're going to ask communities to come up with 25%. You could break that the next year. That's the point of policy and guidelines is to act as a guideline and to act as a promise. And this is actually, I think, a rare thing for local government to say, hold us accountable. If in three or four or five years, if there are still members around...
I think you're accountable every four years.
Right. And even more accountable to say, this is what we're stating. The taxpayer is going to come first. One out of every $2 will be for property tax relief.
But you can't do that. That's what I'm trying to say.
You absolutely can. Non-binding, you can set a policy or a guideline.
Non-binding, then you're not doing anything. You're setting a guide for a future board.
Then no policy should ever exist. But we do have policies as a county. We do, even Supervisor Smith is asking to come up with a TIF policy. Now, does it have the force of law that if you didn't follow that policy the next year, you would somehow be breaking code? No. But it sends a message to our communities, this is what our TIF policy is, this is what our guidelines are, this is what the intention of this board is. I heard a lot pre-election about property tax relief as it related to CF Industries and how it was going to be sort of the champion thing. And now, when it's coming to not 60%, because I did think of that, but 50% seems like an even clean thing to be able to do, that people understand, there is a resistance and I think that...
I don't think there's any resistance. I think what was said, I hope what was said, was that there will be tax relief for the property taxpayers.
Right.
To what amount? I don't know that anybody... Well, you ran for office. I wasn't up for election, so I don't know what was said. I didn't go to any of the debates.
I think it was 30 to 60% is what my predecessor and I were discussing, but now it's coming to a formal...
Well, your predecessor's not here. He has no say in what's going on here. Three of us were here and I don't know that we ever, you know, came up with a number. The first time we saw it was when we got this back from Terry Lutz. And that is if the money's available. You have to have the money to pay your bills. If you're going to continue to create debt, you have to have the TIF and you have to have access to it to pay that debt.
And again, I agree with you. If, 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 if...
And I'm not a big one, you know, to create debt.
Right. And that's where you and I are on the same page on this thing. If you are going to create all this debt, you've got to have the money to pay for it. But what we're saying here is, wait a second. We don't have all the money to pay for all this debt and to TIF out so far. I actually think we're on the same page and I think you're going to be with me by the end of this because there's an opportunity here to say, we can, with balance and structure, we can say, this is what we have available. And we're not going to exceed that because we promised your families out there that this money, 50% of it, is going to go for property tax relief. And if we do get so wild with TIF and we bond for $130 million, then I agree. We won't have... We have the money to pay. We won't have, we won't have the money to pay, pay it back, and we won't be able to do property tax relief. But if you don't have any guide, there's no line to be able to try to follow.
Well, the guide is the budget. And you do it every year, and you're supposed to be able to think, you know, what is in the best interest of the community.
Mm-hmm.
And if it's spending money on a project, that's what you do. If giving tax relief is the best thing to do for the property taxpayer, then that's what you do. But that's up to each individual board. We're talking about money, right now, that none of us, in our terms, and you've got three years, three-plus years on your term, you're talking about money that's not even going to be there during this term. Now, whether you run for another term, whether you're elected or not, you know, that's either here nor there. But you don't have any say in that. None. Now, if you want to leave a, a note, reduce taxes to a future board, or put it in a, what do they call it, a time capsule, then do that. But don't sit here and say, we're going to give property tax relief, and you don't have that authority. You do not have that power. It's just a feel-good thing. And I've got to go, I'm getting into your item now, 9B, where you say, it believes that it, the government, that it can spend money better than its own public can. That's never been the case since I've been on the board. The only thing we spend money for are services that the public wants, or that we have to provide. As far as I'm concerned, I, I can't remember any grandiose project that we ever did from the taxpayers' money. The sheriff left. Ask him how many times he got increase in personnel, or, I don't see any elected officials out here. We held them right.
Pat Northam.
Oh, Pat.
He's not looking that way. You're looking over here, aren't you?
Here's a chance you get to agree with me, Pat. He never got, well, we were pretty easy with Pat. But as far as personnel, they had to perform.
Right. We did add, we did add to the sheriff personnel this year, and I don't want to get.
Now, you are here, see, that's why that happened.
Right, right. I don't want to get too far afield on the budget, but.
I think you two need to go on a retreat.
I agree.
Well, I think we all need to go on the retreat, truly, and look at a range, because that is something that I think makes much more sense than tying yourselves down. So if you want to say to the public, I promise the board in five years will give you tax relief, at least it makes more sense for 30 to 60% and arrange it, and, and to look at something that has some flexibility.
We can just plan for the future. I don't know what's coming down. All we can do is plan for it. But this doesn't plan for it. It just, it just doesn't, in my opinion.
The only thing, and then I'll be quiet, the only thing I disagree with is, this is about long-term planning, budgeting every single year. You know, we look at our kids and we say, okay, in hopefully 20 years, they're going to want to go to college, and so we're going to start setting aside, and we're going to set this. Now, are there going to be emergencies? Sure. But unless you have a long-term plan, and not to get into the past board versus new board, but unless you have a long-term plan, and you have something that you are shooting for, that's the point of policy. And I think it's a, a good thing to set out at 50%. That's what I'm going to support and ask for the board to support today, and I think it'll send a powerful message.
I, I would, and I did not talk to Mr. Justin, I talked to Mrs. Smith about it. But I think before we do this, we should know, you know, there's ramifications, no matter what you do. And I really don't know if we're causing problems by doing this or not. And if Justin said we are.
He said we could be. I mean, he's not going to say we are.
I heard a lot of weasel words from the Owlers people, and basically, you might lose ratings. You might not be able, if a big project came down the road, to support it. Well, why in the hell wouldn't you? I mean, if, if Toyota wants to build a $10 billion plant out here, are we going to release half of that? No, we're not. I don't care which board it is.
Well, you talked to Owlers, so, and you talked to Justin.
I thought he was our bonding attorney.
All right. So we've got two different opinions, and they both say the same thing?
Yeah. They're basically saying what-if, what-if, and what-if. Okay?
Why would we not listen to our attorney, even if there are the what-ifs? What are the, what is the hurry? If you want long-term planning, what is the?
They said what-if, and I don't buy the what-ifs.
Well, then what's?
You're going to have a rating change one way or another. Why would a bonding company change our rating? We have $50 million coming in, and we're going to take it to 25. It's brand-new money. It's not old money. It's brand-new, and we never had it. So they're going to say, oh, because you have this new money, and you don't have it all in the same pot, we're going to lower your rating? Come on. I don't buy that for a minute.
But you don't even have that money.
That's what I'm saying.
For the next 20 years. So what, what, what is this policy we're passing?
It's the same thing, you know, you, it's the same thing as any policy does. I mean, we can violate any policy, and you, you know, various times, I'm sure each board has, to a certain extent, said, we're going to make an exception to policy, but if you don't have a policy there in the beginning, you don't have anything to guide yourself with. And that's, that's the point.
But we're not guiding ourselves. We're guiding future boards.
Nobody's setting up the board. If, if I didn't believe this is something we should be accountable to ourselves, that's the difference. We went from having the fifth-largest property tax increase, or the largest property tax increase in the last five years, to actually lowering tax askings. This board has taken almost a year, almost a year now. And all I'm trying to say is, can we, can we go ahead and take that 30 to 60% and go with 50% for property taxpayers? I'd like the public, and I think the public will, to weigh in on this, and I think that they'll say, you mean that $56 million is what you want to use for economic development, and we can't take 50% of that, which was promised to us?
That's not an honest figure, Jeremy.
Why isn't it?
When do you have that $56 million?
You have it over the next 20, about 22 years.
So now you're talking, for the next five years, you have nothing. Then for maybe five years, you have a few hundred thousand dollars. Now we're 10 years out. So you start gathering that money in the last five to eight years.
The most sizable, right.
We're out to 1928, or 2028.
But you're actually at 2020, you're at 792,000. And what's the, what's the problem with saying half of that goes, instead of to this board?
It's not a problem, but it's not honest.
Then we're on the same page. It is honest. It's as forthright and transparent.
We disagree there.
Yep.
Can I sum up my agenda, or what I think I'm hearing? That there is no desire to go into this process of looking at this envisioned 2050 plan. There's.
For me, it's way down the road.
The board majority does not want, and we don't care to listen to our attorneys. Is that, I mean, that's what I'm hearing.
I think I'll accept the last sentence.
We don't care what they say, and we don't want this kind of a plan to be digested and looked at. Is that right? Because I would like to submit an agenda item, but I'm not going to waste my time, once again, writing something that will fail again, because it fails all the time.
Well, normally, the votes are three to two, either way, but here's the, the point.
That's what I mean, so, you know.
The, the point is, I'm, I'm open to looking at what that 50% will be for tax increment financing, and how that will be structured. I don't think it's an honest or fair characterization to say, we don't care what the attorneys say.
Well, that's what I heard. That's why I was, that's what I heard.
You misheard. And I think asking a bonding attorney about a non-binding issue, and hearing the conditional ifs, that's the point where, where we depart the ways.
Okay.
Can we move to 9B?
Just one more question. This is an information item only. Would it be proper for Mrs. Smith to ask for a postponement at this time?
Of what?
Which item?
Of 9B.
I don't think it would, because we're not on that item. Is that correct?
Well, I'm asking Joshua if he's paying any attention to me at all.
You're asking about 9B?
I haven't moved.
I'm asking in 10.
Okay.
If you could make a motion for 9B to be postponed until after we have a consultation with our bonding attorney, and possibly a retreat of this board, so that everybody knows where everybody's at? Would that motion be proper, or can it be done?
Well, you could do something similar to that. If, if we actually get to 9B, there could be a motion to table it, which would be essentially the same thing, but.
Well, so could, could you do that on 10? That's what I'm asking. It's information only.
Right. I do not believe so.
Okay.
Okay, 9B.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I feel like we've been here before, but the property tax relief resolution, I think, is a great one for taxpayers. I think with CF Industries' historic move into this county, it needs a historic response, and I think this board can take that action tonight. I just want to make sure that, for the public, they understand, I won't read the whole resolution, but I want to just highlight three parts, and then I will end up moving that. The, the final three paragraphs are, whereas revenue from CF Industries is not generated until FY 2019, county already has four dedicated projects in the area using it tax increments financing. And whereas understanding this resolution cannot legally bind a future board, the current board embraces this resolution as guiding policy, asks the electric to hold public officials accountable for exercising their restraint that comes with limited government. Government now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors sets a guideline that in FY 2020 and beyond, 50% of all CF Industries' revenue be dedicated to property tax relief, and a statement be delivered annually to property taxpayers explaining publicly whether such money was dedicated to lowering the levy rate, offsetting mandated costs without increasing the levy, or dedicated to reserves. That is the resolution, and with that, I would move that the Woodbury County taxpayers' first resolution be adopted, and ask for a record roll call vote.
Need a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
How are you going to notify the taxpayers?
By a statement by our budget analyst. That'll be published in our meeting minutes and posted on our website.
It's just going to be on the website. You're not going to notify the people directly. So anybody that's not on our website would not know about this?
Are you suggesting that it be sent?
I'm just asking. I'm not suggesting anything.
Sure. I, I think that it would be publicly notified through the means that we normally notify the public.
Minutes are printed in the three papers.
What I'd be open to, if you wanted to send something out, I would be fine, too.
No, that's just more work and more cost for either the treasurer, possibly the auditor.
Roll call.
Boss.
Most emphatic, no. I know I embellished that, but I intended to.
Smith?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Um?
Aye.
Muntz?
Yes. Okay. Next item up for bid is reports from committees. I would say that, announce that the four people going to training for True Speak, Train the Trainers, will be Todd Wick, Ed Gilliland, Kevin Green, and Diane Peterson. They were first to volunteer, and probably our stars, so. Anyone else?
Supervisor Muntz and I attended a Sioux Rivers meeting today in La Marz. Coming back to the board in the coming weeks will be amendments to the service delivery personnel contract. I truly believe the changes are outside of the control of this county board. Basically, a couple positions are going from 60% funding by the region to 100%. That's the first one. The second one is going from 25% to 100% funded by the region. This will have an impact of very rough estimate of $80,000 in the next fiscal year. The reason for this is, formerly, the amount paid by Woodbury County was not actually paid by Woodbury County, in that it was reimbursed through Title 19 federal funds. Because the managed care organizations have taken over the targeted case management, we are no longer eligible to be reimbursed Title 19 funds. That is why these positions must be reverted to 100% funding by the region. The effect of this, unfortunately, is that, given the cost sharing, the three counties will pick up the respective extra 40%, and extra 75% of these two positions. And fortunately, that, I believe, is already in the budget recommendation we brought back at the last meeting.
Anyone else?
I have a couple. Did everybody receive this on the Korean War veterans, honoring them with Veterans Affairs? And I also wanted to announce that Danielle Dempster was elected second vice president of the Iowa Association of County Veteran Service Officers. I realize that's a time commitment, but I think one that will raise the profile of our county, and will help her to serve veterans even better. And then, just two other things. Law enforcement, I want to state my appreciation for them. I'm sorry I couldn't be at their luncheon, I was with a guard unit that weekend. And finally, Prairie Hills, you may notice that that is an item that's not on the agenda. We are going to meet Kenny Schmitz, and Taylor Goodwin, and Baker Group, along with the Sheriff's Department tomorrow. We've found some exciting things that I think we'll put before you, and some, some ways that we could take the work release space, that it was originally intended to be in the law enforcement center, and look at that repurposing of space up on that third area to the north. So, we'll bring that back, but just wanted to keep you informed.
They're talking about the annex where they have.
This is the recreation area on the north side, on that roof.
On the roof?
Right. That enclosure that has the three walls.
Well, you're across the street now.
Right.
Matthew and I got to flip hamburgers and potato chips on Saturday. It was fun.
Yes, sir. I had one quick one. Martin Arrows, Woodbury County engineer, that kind of comes under your committee meetings, when you meet as trustees for some of your drainage districts. We got our Corps of Engineers inspection of the Smithland Benham McDonald. One of the key issues down there is the encroachment of farming operations into the profile of the levy in that area. We'll be bringing the board quotes, probably within the next two weeks, for having a land severe go down there and reestablish what our boundaries are. Much of that's been obliterated, but we believe, just from some rough measurements, that there is some significant encroachment of the tillage into the levy profile.
We're talking about the river.
We're talking about the river.
North of the bridge.
We're talking north, south, and into the city of Smithland as well. There's areas there where crop production has intruded into the profile of the levy.
Ooh.
And before we can really begin to address some of the other issues that we have out there, we need to establish where those boundaries are, so. We approached one of our local surveyors who is available to do that work. I should have a quote for the board consideration in the next two to three weeks. I just wanted to make you aware of it. It is one of the key findings of that last inspection, that this is a deficiency in the levy. We have a number up there, as, as some of the experienced board members are aware, but prior to taking care of some of the other embankment issues, we need to know for sure where our boundaries are, and at least address that one issue.
Mark, that reminded me, have we cut down the number of farmers that are farming up to the road south of the airport?
We've made some progress with a couple of them, but we still have. We've made some progress with a couple of them, but we still have, we have some new ones now that are moving in on us. So that, that's an issue where we should go out and, and reestablish, and send a whole new round of letters.
Well, and then we've got to enforce them.
Yeah, we've mowed a, we've mowed a couple, because they've created some severe sight distance problems. We have, uh, one that is, uh, um, it's down by the Danbury Blacktop, that each year we have to go in and we lay back about, uh, eight rows of corn, because they are encroaching so tightly into one of our intersections. Uh, we have another at a curb where there was a fatality, and, uh, um, I believe Mike had to go in there and mow again this year. You, you can't see around the curve, and, uh, it is a, it is a problem, Larry.
And it's been addressed for a number of years, but it's, you know, we've got to take some action. County attorney and the sheriff are just going to have to start to, uh, count them.
Well, we, and that help will be welcome, believe me. Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I ask one more? Uh, Kevin, do you have a couple minutes? I know, I know Karen's at church meeting, so, we won't keep you too long, Karen, but I, I just wanted to, uh, let you know that there was a community health needs assessment update, and, uh, Kevin, I thought it would be good if he just gave us a 30,000-foot view, and helped us to understand what-
Okay, what's, uh, provided you, is just basically the summary that we provided to the Board of Health. And this is something that, uh, public health is required to do every five years, and the hospitals are required to do every three for their community benefit program. So public health has modified their frequency, and we're working with the hospitals, and this is our first collaborative effort. Um, what the first page just outlines is, this has to be data verified and driven. And so we went through a series of different data reviews, looking at, um, status symbols, and we had to do the hospital service territory, which includes Woodbury County. Um, as we went down through, we took a look at identifying priority needs, and then, um, what we will take away the next step in the process is that each of our individual organizations will put together health improvement plans. So as you see about two-thirds of the way down, um, areas that our health improvement plans may focus on are obesity, tobacco and substance abuse, teen births, access to care, cancer screenings, mental illness, and housing. And you may wonder why housing actually falls within a he, health needs assessment. Um, one of those indicates the fact that people without appropriate housing tend to have less healthy habits. Therefore, they can incur additional medical costs if necessary, and there are also many times some of our high-end uses of our emergency health services. Um, so we'll be moving forward with this, and submitting it to the Department of Public Health, but this was the summary, along with just sort of the, um, national health rankings information, which is on page two, um, that we've provided to the Board of Health. So, uh, thank you, Jeremy, for bringing this up, and any questions any, uh, Board Supervisor may have?
Were there be specific, uh, measures that will be taken based on these?
Each and the health improvement we'll be doing is, we'll be selecting our areas that we are going to be addressing from the Health Department's perspective, and we will be putting together specific goals with indicators, measurements to say, "Are we making progress within the year?" Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Need a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Let's go home.